Welcome, everyone. This is the Calabasas Planning Commission meeting of May 2, 2024. With respect to the commission members who are here that we have an excused absence, actually two excused absences for Wendy and Dennis. And so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Bob, could you lead us, please?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see. Approval of agenda.
I move approval.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is announcements and introductions. Matt, do you have any announcements or introductions?
No. Excited to get this meeting started, even though we're a little bit late. Thank you for running it for us.
I have nothing to talk about.
And I don't either. Okay, so moving right along. Next comes oral communications for people who wish to address the planning commission on matters that are applicable to the commission but are not on the meeting agenda. I don't have any cards or see anybody here. So, all right, so then we'll just go to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of April 18, 2024. I have a comment, so I don't know if anybody else does.
I have a comment also.
Okay, so go ahead then.
Do we need to open the proof?
Let's make sure everyone's using their microphones, if you don't mind, and you're close enough to it, it picks you up. Media has reminded me to remind you of that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. On page four, the paragraph that starts with following discussion. At the end of the second line, I want to remove the phrase "at no cost" because it implies that we had approved that.
So on page four, where?
The paragraph that's following discussion, the commission found.
Oh, in the middle of the page.
In the middle of the page, I'm sorry.
And which part are you asking to be removed?
The phrase "at no cost."
Okay.
Wait, so you're saying that... So does Agora Hills allow the plans to be used at no cost?
What?
Well, what does that mean exactly?
They do not have to pay the city any fee to be able to use that, to use one of those plans, and they're not paying the architects' fees to use those plans. So now, they do have to pay costs to put the plans into production because they now have to marry a set of building plans to a site plan, right? They have to have drainage, an infrastructure, a foundation, and so there would be costs involved. They still have to get building permits, and so there are costs for building it. So it probably depends on what your mental framework is when you read that.
Right.
It's not free to get the ADU built by any means, right? But that part of the plan is at no cost.
So that part of the process is what you're saying? Just the plans themselves?
To obtain pre-approved, they'll already be able to be checks in the boxes from building and safety for complying with structural codes and all of that, from wall to wall, floor to ceiling. It's pre-approved.
So do you need some extra words to provide that?
Either we take out the whole sentence, I'm just taking out the fact that we're in effect saying, hey, yeah, we approve no cost, but let the other citizens pay for it, which I don't think was our intent and is something that I was supposed to write from the start.
I mean, I see it. I see plans. It's the plans that are being made available to residents at no cost.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but if you, if there's some...
Whichever two of you agree, I think we're gonna find out if it's gonna stay in or go out.
But do you understand, I think it's only talking about the plans, not, as Tom said, tying the plans to the site, which is another exercise, because you may have to do foundation work or, who knows what else? So...
Agreed, agreed. Although Commissioner Roberts' motivation is definitely commendable, but no, it's just plans. I think plans are clear. Those are what are being made available for free.
Is that okay, Bob?
Made available for free?
The plans are made, are made available for free, just the plans, not implementing them.
Well, it never was implementing, but the cost of the plans, who's gonna, we're gonna have to have plans prepared, presumably by architects, and who's gonna pay for that? The other citizens? I'm not for that. I am opposed to that.
Oh, so perhaps you can explain, Tom. I don't think the...
I understand.
I don't think the city prepares the plans.
And the plans were prepared by a private entity with professionals to do that, and those were taken before the city through a process that they reviewed them and decided what they liked, and then they approved those plans as a set of pre-approved plans for three different types of ADUs.
Who paid the people who prepared the plans?
Well, the city paid for that.
That's what I'm...
I understand, but that's not what this statement says.
It can be implied from that, and I think that, let's take that any sense that the city is gonna pay for the plans.
Well, they're not paying for each version. They paid once.
There were two alternatives. One, they could go to the architects and make a deal with the architects. The other is the city had paid the freight, and that's not, we didn't vote for that. I don't want to have any inference that that's the case.
I thought we did, actually. I thought we wanted to be like Agora and make it easy for people. I think that's what we did vote for, at least that was my impression.
Yep.
It is.
That's our understanding as well.
And even if it does cost to prepare some, these are like prototype plans that people can just copy, and then they have to adapt it, which is another story.
Yeah. The part with going to an architect to get them would be, for example, a city could pre-approve plans and not have them available at no charge to people who want to use them. They could say, well, here are the pre-approved ones. If you'd like to use one of them, you won't have to get them approved because they're already approved, but you will have to go to the architect who did them to get them. There are some cities that do that. That's not how Agora Hills is set up. They have already plans, they're approved, the city has authority to provide them to other people, so as long as they're doing an ADU in Agora Hills to go through a review by Head and Hills, I mean, not Head and Hills, Agora Hills, then those are the pre-approved plans. They don't pay for the building plans. They're still gonna have to hire an engineer, for example, to do the site engineering, right? There could be unusual soil conditions, slope conditions, all of those, so they still have to make it fit a certain site, but they don't have to reconfigure the walls, change the roof, redo the electrical. All of that's already pre-approved, and they don't have to pay somebody to design that because the plans already exist.
Right.
And that's what this statement's about.
And that's expensive, because I've done this, so, and we didn't have prototypes, so... I'm sorry. Anyway, so is there a motion to approve this or no?
Not without amendment from, not without amendment.
Bob, let me, let me say this. So we're doing the pre-approved plans regardless? Like, that's going to happen?
No.
Right?
There are two ways, using Tom's example.
Right.
One is the architect prepared the plans for people. The city can say, hey, they're good, but the city doesn't have to lay out any money. Other citizens don't have to pay for people who want to build ADUs.
So the city does have to, depending on what we decide, so if we use Agora, then we can get their plans as already done, but if we don't use Agora, if we make our own plans, the city is still having to pay for those pre-approved plans. So as you stated, the city can pay for the pre-approved plans, or the applicant can get another plan from someone else. It's just, it's, the whole act is about making things affordable. So what it does is the person who's trying to build, they can, they can say, oh, I'll use the city's plan or I use my own. So, but either way, the city...
Affordable doesn't mean shifting the burden to other people, and that's what this is suggesting, that people who are not building an ADU are gonna have the plans paid for by other citizens.
Yeah, so it's basically just like taxation, if you want to think of it that way.
Yeah, I do.
It's not that the plans are cost-free, any more than parking is cost-free. Certainly from a principle, that's the situation. What this was intended to say is if whoever wanted to build an ADU walked into the city hall and asked for a set of pre-approved plans, they would get them, and they would not have to do a financial transaction to get them. They are at no cost to that individual at that point in time. Doesn't mean somebody didn't pay for them on the front end, somebody did. And whether this language stays in or not isn't gonna change the minutes, to be honest. So if you want to delete those words, that's fine.
I'm thinking of a solution, just to move on, and maybe we add three words, "at no cost" to the applicant or to the resident applicant, so it's clear that there was a cost on the front end, but...
And that still means that other people are paying for them, and that's what I'm opposed to.
But there's, I'm saying no cost to the applicant, though, because the applicant won't be paying for him.
Well, he's concerned that the city pays or that, but you know what? We do things. We provide parks and streets and all kinds of things we pay for, and we're supposed to encourage ADUs. I think that's the point of this, to make it easier. So, I mean, I'm okay with this wording. I don't know if Matt is okay.
Okay. Well, you don't have a motion then to change the minutes, so then you just need a motion for approval.
Robert, last chance. I mean, if we add "to the individual applicant," so it's clear that what we're saying is there's no cost to that individual applicant, would that be a fair compromise?
Who is paying the cost for the plans? The city is, and I don't think that's right, that we should force that on other citizens.
It's just a word.
The law, the law is requiring...
Yeah, that's why we're here.
The law is requiring it, they have the pre-approved plans.
They're not requiring that the city provide free plans.
What, okay.
It does require us to provide pre-approved plans.
Correct.
It doesn't require us to provide them at no cost. We are encouraged, though, by the state to do that. Let me, let me maybe offer one other point that could get to what your concern is. When we have actual prepared, pre-approved plans as draft for consideration by this body in the city council for ultimate approval, then the cost for doing that will also be shared, right? We're gonna have to hire somebody to do this. That's gonna come at a cost, which I think is getting at what Commissioner Leah, his concern is. The council will be fully aware of that because for them to approve that contract, they're gonna have to know the cost and approve the cost of the contract. So that means the cost is gonna be a known cost. It's going to be one that is vetted in a public setting and approved by a public body before that happens. So the cost will be covered in terms of a decision to apply those funds for this reason. Does that help answer your question?
Well, it's a decision for the council. It's not a decision...
It is a decision for the council. That's correct. That's what I was just saying.
For the planning commission, because it can be accomplished with a minimal cost. You can have a deal, as some cities do, where the architects will prepare the plans, and they get paid if the applicant wants to use them. That's the way, I think, is the fairest way and is the way that I would support, but...
Well, do you want to make a motion to add your wording "at no cost" to the applicant?
If it doesn't satisfy Commissioner Leah, I don't, I don't feel...
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I would. I think we need to move on. I'm sorry about the question.
So I'll second it, although, any other discussion? No? I mean, I think you made your point, and I think you can raise this at the council meeting. So all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed.
Commissioner is opposed. Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to just emphasize that we've certainly heard, Bob, and we'll be sure to include in the discussion with the council that that's sort of fundamental to the decision, is that it's providing something really is a subsidy, which I think is what you're getting at.
It is, and we have no way of measuring what that cost is.
Well, we'll find out, or the council will find out.
Well, because you don't know how many different variations you're gonna have to have for these ADUs.
So we're in discussions now with Agora, and the, this is kind of premature, but we're in discussions, and we could, because it's a government entity, we could actually use their plans for free. However, we have to discuss the architect and the copyrights and the licensing with that. So all of this is premature, but noted and understood, Mr. Leah, your concern.
All right. So next is adoption, I'm gonna get my glasses, of a resolution 2024-788 approving file number, site plan review 2023-016, oak tree permit 2024-004, consistent with planning commission direction on April 18, 2024, and I noticed that Will Shepherd is here. This, I did have a comment on. I don't know if either of you has a, has a comment. Do you have anything, anything to comment on on that one?
I did, and I'm trying to find it. I think I, the piece of paper I have put in is gone.
This is 23616 Valley View wrote.
Yes, no, I am very familiar with it. Maybe I...
Do you want me to just mention mine?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, and then we'll come back to you? Okay. So this is regarding condition 15 and the relocation of the trash containers, which the applicant agreed to do. I just wanted to note that we seem to have two conflicting provisions of the municipal code. The height of the wall at the street can only be 42 inches, which, as I said, is not high enough to cover the trash container, but we also have a section 17.12.165, which says that for trash, for trash enclosures, the wall must be at least four feet high. So again, that's like inconsistent, who knows what prevails, but if you move it to, you know, by the other side of the driveway, then it has to be 40, if you use a trash enclosure wall, it has to be 48 inches high, which would exceed the height of the trash container, so... And they have specific rules. You have to have a gate and all this stuff, so you may want to take a look at that. That's all, just a comment. Otherwise, I have no, no issues with this. Bob, did you?
It wasn't significant, being given more of a question to call on, I can't...
Do you have any, so is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's approved. Item two. And now we get to item three, which is a discussion item, and we discussed this a little bit last time, providing recommendations for consideration by the city council regarding the following general plan housing element implementation programs. One, pre-approved plans for accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Two, objective design standards for residential development projects. And three, standards and processing requirements for adaptive reuse projects. It's basically continued from the last meeting, and I think, Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So the ADUs were covered in the last meeting, and we had clear direction from that. We promised the commission we'd return with a presentation and discussion tonight just on the objective design standards for multifamily residential projects. So the objective design standards have a pretty simple purpose. They're to implement streamlined and ministerial review processes for qualifying multifamily projects. They'll establish the criteria for determining which ones qualify for those, application of those standards, and then provide that objective framework and the standards to guide building design. We're obviously doing this to make sure, in terms of how we develop it, how we word all these, we're gonna try to make sure that projects that adhere to those standards are maintaining the character of the city. Examples that we're providing, we listed a longer list at the last meeting of cities that we'd looked at their objective standards. We indicated to the commission at the time that these three, Agora Hills, San Mateo, and Los Catos, were the cities or towns that gave us the, what we felt were the best examples that we could point to. When we would direct a responder to an RFP, we'd say, here are some examples we'd like for you to consult. So with that in mind, and wanting to understand some of the things that you would like to see in terms of categories or groups of objective standards, because I don't want to get into details of a standard, that's what the whole development of standards process is going to do. But I do want to summarize a couple of things here. We did provide as exhibits to the written report each of those cities' objective design standards, and so when I'm done with the sort of general outline stuff that I do, that I'm gonna do in this presentation, we'll then just have an open discussion, and if any of you want to make reference to one of those documents, as long as you tell us which one and what page number, we'll all follow along, and we'll have a discussion about particulars of any of those. So, starting with the city of Agora Hills, here's an example of a, what would come under a massing and articulation category of standard. And so this gives you an idea of how a standard could be employed to diminish the mass or at least create a perception of a diminished mass to a building, right? Because it requires a step back. So that's an idea, and you can see that it has a specific measurable component, which is six feet, right? And when it starts? Starting with the first floor. So the whole point is you want it measurable. It's not requiring any kind of subjective decision-making as you apply it to a set of plans. And then here's another example from Agora Hills on facade materials and treatments. So here, they want to make sure that for the taller buildings, that unbroken multi-story sections of the same material texture color is not used for more than a certain length, so that you're promoting a visual differentiation over a long expanse, so that you don't get a unattractive visual plane there, like a giant wall. Trying to avoid that, and you give an objective standard with specific lengths on how to, how to accomplish that. They have some sustainable design-based objective standards. So that, in terms of natural light, they specify a certain hours of natural sunlight. They mention it for the winter solstice, which is a date everybody knows, right? And at a specific latitude. So you can determine exactly how much of that is with an analysis for any given project, right? So it's objective. It's a more difficult, I mean, it's objective, and it's more difficult to apply, but it is nonetheless objective and achievable. Then you've got water conservation. They have to meet or exceed the water efficiency standards, and they just refer to the state and local codes at the time. So those would be standards that are measurable. They say local, and typically what that is gonna be is through the water district. Then stormwater capture, they, this is a good example of a certain type of standard, by the way, and I'm gonna give you some others later, mostly from, I think, Los Catos, but this gives you an example of where somebody gets to choose from a menu of options and to meet it. So it requires two out of four, in this case, right? And this is just to incorporate them. It's not saying how big or anything like that. City of San Mateo, or Mateo, here's an example of something different than what we looked at. For examples from Agora Hills, this looks at an outdoor-focused aspect, and it's saying, for example, that you need to have a minimum eight-foot-wide public easement between buildings. And then a width between buildings is established. So those are numeric. They also, like the other two cities, I've talked about Agora Hills and Los Catos, they provide a lot of illustrations, and with the dimensions and the language that's discussed, at least shown in kind of a caption form, so that people can understand what the objective is and how it's supposed to be applied. And this is a particularly good example of that as well, from San Mateo. Then they give one of the choose-from-a-menu-type objectives within that same category of the paseos. So they have to provide at least three of these pedestrian amenities for every 20 linear feet within the public realm elements. So it's measurable, again. It's not saying what they have to look like, what they have to be made out of, but if they're gonna put cafe tables and chairs, and they show on their plans they're gonna do it, every 20 feet, well, that meets one, and they just have to pick two others, and then they'll have the three, right? And so that becomes a check in the box as well. Here's something else from San Mateo, and this gets to facade articulation. And they provide a number of things that can meet that, like bay windows and balconies, window recess, the roof elements, particularly the eve projections to create shadow lines. So they have to provide at least two. Somebody has to do, and there are four that they can provide, you know, choose from there. Here's something else from San Mateo, and it gets to, you know, colors and materials. You know, each material constituting at least 10% of the building. There's language. I didn't cut and paste the actual code language to go with some of these photos, because I'm just trying to give the commission an idea of types of standards, and this is another good example of colors and materials, but also articulation to agree, because it's addressing visual interest over a length and height of a structure. And here's, in terms of massing, here's an example of a standard that cuts into, well, really, it's articulation again, but massing as well. Have to have a minimum 18-inch wall plane break for every 15 to 30 feet of, in this case, horizontal. All these result in plane breaks, all of those highlighted, 18-inch minimum, right? And again, they create, you all see these things in the types, a lot of this from architectural review panel, but they're applying it case by case, and in many times with some subjectivity, but of course, as architects are, it's a subjective application of knowledge they all have in that profession, and so there's almost an objective aspect to it when ARP is working on. But this makes it actually measurable. You don't need to be an architect to apply these. San Mateo, another time, ground floor, this looks at mixed use. So here's an example of one specific to a mixed use project, which is another consideration. I mentioned that the last meeting, that if the commission wants a different kind of standards, or at least a set of the standards to be specifically applicable to mixed use, as opposed to just multifamily residential, that would be good to know, and we'll develop those too. But so here's an example, they have to talk about, here they talk about, you have to have 75% or more of the ground floor of mixed-use building glazed. So at least there, they wanted more window area and similar type thing, rather than steel and stone and other veneer. That's not to say that that would be something we would want, but it gives you an example. We might want just the opposite of that, right? Then they also say you have to have at least 12 feet of height from the floor to ceiling. So they're requiring a taller floor plate here. There's another example, I'll show you later, where it's a taller floor plate, but an entirely different situation. San Mateo, another one. Other notable ones that you'll, that you'll find in theirs are standards relating to windows, doorways, and stairways, materials and colors. I showed you one example, but they got more than that. Additions to existing buildings, right? Not just new buildings. They have standards that apply to additions, and then you can have landscaping, open space and lighting. All of that can also be included in San Mateo they are. So now, town of Los Catos, another great example, very detailed in what they provide. Here's an example of where they're dealing with, in the same sense that I pointed out, the paseos for San Mateo. They've got a landscaping type thing here. They have to make sure that there's one tree per linear foot, that sort of thing, and this is for the space between buildings. Here's mixed use, residential mixed use with a ground floor, non-residential shall provide site amenities on a minimum 15% of the ground plane between the building and the front or side property line. So they're looking for something in there. I'm sorry. I don't have it there. I'll have a diagram later. Next, next slide. And they have to have designs in the walls to accommodate pedestrian seating. They even say how, that seating can't be more than a certain height, so, because if it was taller than that, it may not meet seating. So they're defining what these things are. You have to have site furnishings, et cetera. And so here you get an idea. Here's development, commercial loans shall place at least 75% of any ground floor, street-facing facade, on or within five feet of setback. So in this case, this is showing that, but I wanted to use this same building example to point out, I'm sorry, here they're showing the property line, and they've got at least 75% addressing it there. So the last slide talked about some, I'll go up one. It talked about, for example, 15% of the ground plane had to be, for example... It talked about, for example, 15% of the ground plane had to be, for example, landscape materials, right? Well, if you look at these spaces here, that's some of those spaces that they're talking about, that you'd have those amenities. So it's a matter of balancing those kinds of things. That's part of what will be the challenge of developing these standards, so that you can make sure that they can go together and not conflict with one another, and prevent something altogether. Another one from Los Catos. Here they're looking at an articulation standard. So you can see that they've got dimensions, you know, minimum, maximum type things here. Total street-facing facade length of the whole building. Their minimum five-foot upper floor setback for 40%. So they're saying you have to have at least 40%, at least five feet setback from that plane. So it's measurable again. It doesn't mean this has to be the result. This is just one example. You could achieve this with different setbacks along this facade. There are different ways to achieve this goal. So these illustrations just show in some cases, well, how do you measure that? How is that done? This is one example of how it's done. So again, illustrations in these documents are extraordinarily helpful, and I would say in many cases are necessary to achieve the goal. Again, from Los Catos, multi-story building facades that face a street shall incorporate breaks in the building mass by implementing a minimum of three of the following solutions along the combined facade area of all primary buildings facing the street. So in the case of a corner buildings, it would go along both street facades, right? But the reason I showed this very long thing here is mostly to give you a really good example of what I call a menu of options that meet the standard. So here, they want at least three of the following, where there are six options here. Nobody's telling them which ones to pick. This is one way you can create objectivity in the review of something, but still accommodate design choice on the part of property owner, developer, and the designer. The less flexibility you have, the less, the more difficult it is to get unique design that creates its own interest on the basis of just the inventiveness of the design. Because the more standards there are, the more you force a design into a particular type of look, so...
But nothing, none of this precludes an applicant from going through the normal process if they want something more, something different, right? I mean, they can go to the Architectural Review Panel, Plan and Commission, and so forth.
Anybody can decide they want to do that.
Right. If they don't, if they don't want to take, if they don't want to take advantage of this.
The state requires us to have objective standards for residential mixed use and commercial, that includes residential mixed use. I mean, for residential multifamily use, and also for commercial mixed use that includes residential multifamily. So we have to have them, and developers do insist on using them, and they already have the right to insist on it.
I mean, they, right, but for financial reasons, they would do that. But if they wanted to make something different, they could opt out of that and go through the normal process, right?
Sure.
Okay.
So, in this case, though, for somebody who would choose to use objective standards, we can hold them accountable for, in this case, certain things that would break building mass. We could say, you're going to have to break up the building mass, and we have standards you have to adhere to to make that happen. But instead of saying, you're going to have to do this standard, that standard, and this standard, we're saying, pick from here, right? If you're doing a certain modern design, that you're wanting to emphasize horizontal lines, whatever it is that you really want to achieve, you might do a certain group of these that would be different than somebody trying to do a more traditional Mediterranean style of some type. Well, by having some flexibility like this, you can accommodate some variety in architecture better than if you just say, these are the standards we're going to apply. So I'm just, I'm wanting to bring these up to make sure that the commissioners understand that this is one way to achieve certain goals while still achieving the fundamental overall goal. And if this is something that appeals to you, it'd be nice to know before we go to the city council. So here are a couple of examples of those, where, for example, for a total facade length of 50, greater, greater, walkway sheltered by ground floor arcade with certain dimensions, whatever, they have to provide for that, okay? And then here's one for the full height of the building base ground floor, whichever is greater, which is this. Vertical elements such as columns or pilasters that protrude a minimum of one foot from the facade, so this is depicting that. Again, I didn't include the code link. I'm sorry. Here are the two. I keep pointing on my screen. So you have these two standards. This is an arcade requirement. This one is requiring vertical elements. They give an example of columns. Doesn't mean you have to use columns. It could be a very straight, you know, monolith-type feature that, in a modern building design, could even protrude at the top, who knows? The architects would decide. But this one requires some verticality in the case of a building meeting certain massing standards for eligibility of this standard. So there are a couple of examples from Los Catos. Here's another menu one from Los Catos. A lot of what that town uses, they use this type of approach a lot. And this one requires two of these five. So you can have balconies or habitable projections at a, with a minimum depth of two feet for a minimum of 20% length of the street-facing facade. Now, this certainly makes for good problem-solving on the part of architects, because they have to sort through these sort of things and meet with their client and figure out how they're going to marry their client's desires with these. They already have to do that with regular zoning standards, but a lot of what's, quote, "regular" is subjective. That's the problem. You're going to go to our ARP, and they're going to decide whether it's good or bad. And we actually have really good results from our ARP. We get fabulous input, and we have a lot of applicants who listen well to them, I think, and we get better products as a result, better projects. So we're hoping we won't really see much different than that. And we won't see a whole lot different than that if we can put into our standards a good group that sets the direction we want for future projects. And by the way, if the commission would want us to run the objective standards by the ARP, which would be staff's inclination anyway, you'll get their highly-valued opinion on the set of standards. Okay. So that's another example, the menu. Here's some of those two, that's two, this right here is two of the five. So if you had a project that did both of these, they would meet that particular set of standards. This one is the balconies or habitable projections that I mentioned earlier, and then this example is greater facade height. I gave you a heads-up, this one was coming. So opposite of that one that was for San Mateo, I think it was, this said you have a 12-foot minimum floor plate in the first floor. This one requires at least 10 feet. They have to have a greater facade height, and in the text of the code, it's like 10 feet minimum. And to do it way, taller windows and whatnot, as well to basically emphasize you did the taller plate there. So it has to be at least 10, and it's supposed to be taller here than the rest of it. So you could do both of these, right? And you will met that whole menu just by having two out of five. So we provided these as the sites in the written report. We did it in the last presentation. Anybody who wants to look these up, they can click on it. Also on the website, we had the copies in print before you as part of your packet as well. So if you want to discuss any of those, we'll start opening it up and talk about some of the categories. So it gets to, like we said last time, just how detailed do you think this needs to go? Do we want to include mixed use as a separate group, or at least subset that's unique? And a reminder again, we do have other standards that already exist that we probably are just going to have to refine because they aren't objective. And so there'll be some that, even if you didn't ask for it, we're going to end up having them in there because we need to fix it. It may have a subjectivity that borders on a legal problem or something, or is in conflict with an objective one we're wanting to set. So there will be some that just sort of come at you at the end that you may wonder where'd that come from. We can't predict that until we get into it. So that's my presentation, so floors yours.
Thank you very much, Tom. That was, this has been a wonderful presentation and the materials that we received. I'm sure we each have comments. We also have one speaker card from the chair of the ARP, so should we take him first then? So if you could come up and... And we're welcome to as detailed comments as you want. They'll take it all down and, you know, and come up with something.
Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, good evening. I didn't know I'd be speaking on this, but I'm glad I'm here. I was here for the other element, and I might ramble a little bit, because again, I wasn't thinking I would talk about this, but the first thing I'd like to, oh, Will Shepherd from Calabasas. No, I need to say that. I applaud the approach to this prescriptive but comprehensively quality-focused development of a design guideline for the city of Calabasas. I think that that, this effort is definitely worthwhile. Tom touched on things that I was going to talk about. You wouldn't want these design guidelines to conflict one another. So the six-foot setbacks might be in conflict to some other facade articulation where it would, might be impossible to weave the two things together. So having a menu, if you will, that is vetted through, like the ARP, where we can kick this around and say, well, if you did this to somebody, they might have a problem, because then this is in conflict. So I would say, I would volunteer my group, at least me, to look at this and work with the staff, if you want us to, in kind of hammering out what might be some good criteria. Because one, we don't want a, we don't want city by cookbook. We don't want a design homogeneity to be produced because you're trying to control a kind of uncontrollable element. State says you have to have these mixed use, you know, high-dense multifamily projects. You want them to be nice, but by right, you can't really deny that, right? So I totally get that, and I think that's a good thing. But I think we can make it, we can make it so that your city doesn't end up looking exactly the same everywhere. That goes to a kind of a narrative about urban planning, in the sense that, you know, there's not much land left here in this downtown area to really do anything with. So as part of this approach is there are some overlays that says, here's one district which has this kind of design standard. It might be taller buildings, it might have some different articulation. Here's another zone which might have a different, slightly modified set of design standards based on massing and heights, et cetera. So there, it might not be one size fits all for your whole city, but it could be something that could lend to some, I think, an easier job for, for your staff to review things that by right are kind of not going to necessarily go through the ARP. It's kind of one of the under, it's a question I have. Maybe we could take a pause to ask Tom. Tom, is the prompting of this in relation to wanting to be able to control the outcome a little bit more from something which is state-dictated? Or is this something that's been in the works for quite some time before all of the Senate bills?
It's really responsive to the state law tightenings and the fact that we have to do it. We have to have and apply objective standards. So one approach could be that we don't make any changes to what we already have. An awful lot of what's already in our development code is objective, right?
Yeah.
So we could do that, but where we don't have objectivity, or we've not written standards in a way that even includes an objective standard to achieve something, then we miss opportunities to have a set of, by using objectivity to get what we want. So it gets to what you were just saying. You want objective standards that achieve as much as you can within reason, because you don't want to stifle creativity, right? But, and so that's the point. And we're responding to state law. But we're not, it's not like we weren't already. Most of what we have meets that requirement, but this is our opportunity to do it better.
Well, no, that's good to know. And I think that you could springboard that into something that I, it's been in my mind about this city, which is to say, there might be a, it might turn into a kind of a larger discussion about the elements of the city that aren't painted out yet, relative to multi-use buildings, relative to other, just commercial things that, you know, you want to have control of. So that in 100 years, this thing looks great, because you planned it that way. So I'm in, I'm in big support of something like this, if, with the caveat that it doesn't turn into a dictum which stifles creativity, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be an architect, given a design book that I, that I felt like, I can't even move in this thing. You know, that, that wouldn't be good for you or for the applicants. It might then stifle development. Someone might say, it's just too hard to do anything in Calabasas because they make you do these 100 things. So you've got to be careful in that sense. So I'm glad I was here for the other thing, and I'm glad I got to hear it. I can answer questions. You can flip some at me if you wanted to, but I guess my main point is that I'm in support. I think it's a great idea that once it's developed a little further, that your ARP look at it and given the time to sort of consider things. There's some pretty smart people in that group, and it would be great to have them evaluate things, is to say, is this in conflict? Does this one stipulation here mean that you can't do something over there? So that when you publicly bring this thing out, it's not in conflict, right? Because we've seen that in your codes. One thing is in conflict with another, and then it leads to a fight. So that's all I wanted to say, but if there's questions, I can answer them.
Well, thank you very much. But let's address what he suggested first, and let's just discuss, do we all agree that the ARP, the Architectural Review Panel, should review and have input in this?
Absolutely. If we're going to have design standards...
Yeah. I, we all agree. That's unanimous, so I think staff has heard that, and...
Okay.
We're not architects. I mean, we see all these developments, but we need your expertise.
Okay, great, yeah.
And then I'm sure, but thank you. And you're welcome to comment again. We're going to take our, do our own comments.
No, I'm fine. I just, I wanted to say thumbs up. I wanted to say, good job, Calabasas.
Thank you.
Yeah. What about the idea, since going on the same idea, you know, from what was suggested, let's talk about different zones? I mean...
I agree. That was, I actually had it here in one of my comments, too. San Mateo has defined areas, and we could do the same. I'm not going to sit here and try to define them now, but certainly Old Town is different from some of the other areas, you know, that, that you may want to have a certain, you may want to try to make it look Monterey Spanish or something. And we used to have design guidelines, we still have them, but people don't seem to follow them, on the west side, Las Virginas, that hotel didn't follow it. But it's supposed to be Monterey Spanish, but those were guidelines, not objective standards, and that's, that's different. And, but I agree, I think certain areas are not the same. You know, in Calabasas Park, it's more Mediterranean, it's, it's different on the west side, and the office buildings are different, that area, you know? They're just not the same. So we're not here tonight to try to create the zones, but I think that's a good idea. Do you...
I agree. I had the same thought, different way. How do we preserve a neighborhood? You know, can I just come put in something that totally...
Right. We had that issue, I remember, in, near Dry Canyon, where somebody came and put a box house, you know, a gray box house that's totally different from all the other homes, which had pitched roofs and things like that. And this had a flat roof and different materials, and I think you and I are probably the only ones who objected, but anyway. So, yeah, certain areas. Well, look, we had complaints last time about some of the development in Malibu Canyon, being quite different, the new, some of the new homes from after the Woolsey fire.
I would like to remind you, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair, but this, we're talking about objective standards for residential multifamily.
Right.
Not single family.
Well, no, it's also, it's also for mixed use.
That's correct. Mixed use that would have residential multifamily.
But anyways, okay, you're right. We'll bring us back to the topic. Okay, so for mixed use or multifamily, we are all in agreement that there should be some sort of defined zones or areas, as San Mateo said. Will also touched on points, and it said, like, I noticed that in Los Catos, they use a scoring system, kind of the way LEED uses points, you know, the LEED rating system uses points, which, and you mentioned it as well, it gives, we're having options, you know, give, I mean, are you guys in favor, are you gentlemen in favor of that?
Well, you talk about Los Catos, their checklist, I think is fabulous.
Yeah, they had it.
Whichever way we go, we should have a checklist like that, and let them stand up and say, this is how we meet it. Whichever way we go, we should have a checklist like that and let them stand up and say, this is how we made it.
Yeah, I also wrote that. Los Gatos had a very, a checklist which was very helpful. What, do you like that idea or do you just want to give them designs?
I know, I do. I do. I'm in agreement, but it begs the question, how did Los Gatos come up with this standard? I'm just curious, did they rely on a previous municipality? And did that municipality rely on a previous municipality or did Los Gatos hire consultants? I mean, I'm just so curious now. I mean, in, in whose footsteps are we following?
It all started in Greece. When they did the Acropolis.
The B.C.s, yeah.
I, who, who's to say who first developed? I mean, we've been doing the objective standards and zoning since zoning was first put into place in the nineteen twenties. But we get better at it over time and it's through the involvement of professionals like yourselves and Will, architects and everybody else. So. We are, as I said, we already have a lot of objective standards in every city around the country. Steels or whatever, purloins, I think is an old word, from one another, really good standards, effective things. And we go to conferences to learn about it, to apply it. I mean, like any other industry.
So as the newest commissioner, I have another question. Have we relied or stolen from Los Gatos or San Mateo in the past? Is there a reason we gravitated towards? I mean, Agora makes sense. It's right there. Okay.
We, what we did is, uh, without going to all, something like four hundred jurisdictions throughout the state. Picked our own brains from among our own staff and also former staff that used to work here. We know in certain places. And other means to sort of at least pick some and pick from some cities that we would have expected. And then, to be honest, it's not like everybody has jumped right in there to get their objective design standards done to meet the state requirements first thing. So we expected that in many cases, there wouldn't be any that we found at some cities we thought might have them. They're still working on them in some cases. So we brought to you last meeting those that we were able to find, some that we thought were relevant and applicable, at least in part. And, uh, now we have these three. Los Gatos, my sister used to live in, and I was a little familiar with, um. It's really solid care of the community through zoning and whatnot. And so I wanted to make sure we looked at that one.
Matthew, did you ask who helped with their objective design standards? Los Gatos?
Yeah, if somebody did, if a consultant.
Metropolitan Planning Group.
So, um, it, Los Gatos uses like a numbering system and a checklist. Agora Hills provides a number of approved styles and you have to choose a number of features of approved styles. Do you have any thoughts about that? Would you like to do that as well or in lieu of the point system? I mean.
Well, I, I think it's the cart before the horse. We have to look at where in our city. There is the possibility that we have to build something like this and then based on standards where that location is.
But that's the zoning thing, but do you want to have approved styles like Agora Hills? And you have to use a certain number of features of those styles.
I was concerned that we could end up with a Frankenstein building where people pick three and they, they just don't look together, but they like it.
Well, I think it would be almost the opposite. I think it would be more similarity if I not, maybe, I think Will was talking about the creativity might, might be missing or something. Cause I, I, I don't know the answer, but do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, I've, I spent my second summer of law school in Croatia, former communist country. And when you, when you visit, you know, the former communist countries, you see what we're being warned of, which is too much uniformity. Residents look the same. You can't deviate much. I guess I, I prefer wherever there's more flexibility. And it seems that the Agora option is gonna be harder to afford that flexibility. So. I like this, the point system.
We would also have to have different styles again for the different zones. That means more work for staff, I think.
Oh, a hundred percent. And then the other option is if we, I mean, staff asked us if we want to divide from there the multifamilies and the, the mixed use. I mean, if we want to have different standards there too. So we have a lot of subdivisions, subdivision in terms of, you know, how to approach this, but. Maybe staff can tell us when it becomes too much work. I mean, it's, at some point, it, it seems like it could.
Well, I think they'll get a consultant, you know, I mean, they're not gonna. And then, and the next comment I had was on illustrations and I noticed that Los Gatos and San Mateo have numerous illustrations and Agora Hills does not. Which, do, do you prefer one or the other or?
It's harder to read Agora Hills and visualize it.
Oh, because they don't have the illustrations?
They don't have the illustration.
All right.
Yet we don't have many locations where the illustrations that Los Gatos and San Mateo have would fit in this city.
You'd be surprised what developers can come up with. We do have places in Old Town, for example. I know that and they're, you know, they'll find places. Or tear something down.
I just invite, invite the commissioners, if I may, to recall the housing element and the sites that were identified to meet our RENA. All of which are zoned for multifamily residential. So if you just think through those and some, many of them, you'll recall are. Reuse redevelopment type properties. So it's not like you have to think through a lot of undeveloped land. There's not much. Left and there wasn't much identified. Um, and this includes, remember Craftsman's Corner. We've got a couple of sites there. So, um. Yeah, I think, I mean, the objective standards are gonna apply to a number of. Areas and certainly to the lion's share of new housing units in this city.
So I think, I think we'd all like to see illustrations like the first two. The next was materials, um, or my next thought was materials. San, San Mateo provided a list of approved materials, which I thought might be a good idea. I mean, I don't want to see another cruise ship like what, you know, we're seeing at the commons, which has acres of glass going up six stories. Or whatever it is. Is that, is that okay to have a list of materials?
Or. I, I listed materials. I just want to caution you that my, I, I came with a slightly different impression for that one. They have a list of materials, but. Applied how? It's just a long list of a lot of things.
Right. It's a long list.
Concrete, glass. They had metal listed, right?
But we could have our own list.
Didn't say that somebody could be limited to only three of those materials necessarily. It might've said it somewhere else. So, okay. But I would just invite you to take a, materials as a category.
Yes, I'm just saying as a category.
I don't know that that's the best example.
No, I, I'm just saying as a category. I don't think you have to copy everything that, that's there. Colors was a, my next subject and that was a big thing for me last time and I didn't know the scientific terms. And I, I mean, I think I referred to, actually, I think I said Pantene and I meant Pantone. I guess I was thinking of shampoo or something. But, uh, Lusk, um, Agora, one of these had a scientific way of describing them. That was Agora Hills. That they had earth tones and they're defined by the hex color codes, hexadecimal color codes. Which are red, green, blue with certain numbers. And then, too bad Dennis isn't here because we both went to Berkeley, but. Berkeley has all their colors listed two ways, by Pantone codes and by hex codes. But, um, I, I personally, I think that's almost too complicated. I don't know how. So, so another approach is to just go to several, several paint stores and Home Depot and Lowe's and pull a palette. And say, this, uh, Dunn Edwards palette is okay for, for, you know, walls and this Dunn Edwards palette is okay for trim. And then do the same thing, you know, maybe have two palettes for, for, for various stores so that people could choose that way, but I don't know. No, that doesn't work.
I would not recommend that you specify.
Yeah, come on up. Cause I, I would like your input. I, I'm not a color expert, but I think that's really important because we've seen some examples in here. Of gray and red buildings and I don't think that's appropriate for almost anywhere in our city, maybe.
No, understandable, but I think you also, you don't want to prescriptively dictate. Colors and materials to certain elements of a building because otherwise your city will look the same everywhere, even though the massing might be a little different. So I think it's fine to say buildings can be made with, uh, these kinds of materials. And I don't even know if you want to necessarily limit it because there's always adoption of new technologies and things that we haven't thought of yet. But something like, I, when I was a, on another review panel, you know, metal that shams stone. So an artificial reality of something in representation of something else, that that makes things look a little cheap. Language like that where it's interpretive, yes, it's subjective, but it's interpretive in the designer's mind as to what they might be able to do.
Well, we're not developing, you know, the specific standards obviously here, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a list of materials, but what do we do with colors? Cause like Agora just says it has to be earth tone and they come up with an RGB, they come up with a hex color code. And, and you can have various hues or various shades of that and that's, but you're gonna get earth tones. And maybe that's okay for Calabasas earth tones, uh, you know, but I, I don't know which way.
So we're actually working on that. Um, you're running into a problem with First Amendment, uh, free expression. And, um, also making a color objective is hard. We're, so we're looking at.
No, but these, these are objective. They actually have numbers.
Right, right.
And that's what Agora did. They came up with.
But are.
Hexa, how does it say? Hexadecimal number.
Yeah, that's just, uh, the levels of our, you know, the two five five, two five five, two five five.
Right, but they're earth tones.
Yeah.
And, and it goes from like a ruddy, ruddy color, you know, down to, you know, a cream or something. I mean, it's, it's a wide range of colors, but it's, it's got, it's very specific.
Color choice though is, 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 is a total art form. And I think the combination of colors is best less, left to the designers rather than being. Codified and saying, these are the things you must do.
But I'm, but what, but how do you, how do you preclude the gray and the black building or the red building?
That's what I'm saying.
Maybe there's things you say you can't do. You can't have a black stealth building on the middle of your yard. I, I don't know. You know, like, like a ergo and moss kind of super dark Hulk. That doesn't fit your overall design guidelines. Not to say that elements of the building couldn't be black, but you, a whole, a whole tonality perhaps is a discussion rather than. Cause I think that's what you're getting at, right?
So I'm not a color expert, but I think this has to be, to me, this has to be addressed because it's an issue that comes up. Even in, even in your, you know, residential projects, but how do you guys want to approach it?
I think that we need to revisit the First Amendment issue. Just because Agora did it, doesn't mean they didn't open themselves up to a lawsuit. I think just, just rest on that. I mean, just the clearest example is if a Republican wants to paint their house or, sorry, their, their business red or Democrat blue. Does the municipality have a right to restrict that? So again, Agora did it, but what I'm hearing from the city attorney, as an attorney myself, of course, so I, you know, it's easy for me to put this hat on. I don't want to open us up to a lawsuit just because Agora did.
And why would only color open up, uh, uh, open us up to a lawsuit as opposed to all this being some sort of artistic expression?
I mean, the history of flags, the history of associating a color to a cause. I mean, you look at the LGBT flag. I mean. The rainbow has a meaning now. Um, again, if, if there's an issue with the First Amendment, I think this is a full stop. No, we're not gonna open ourselves up to a lawsuit.
So I think we need to find out if it is.
Fair enough. Agreed.
And that's, we, we're working on a memo currently.
So we need to find out, but other than that, assuming that it's valid to have some control over color, do you?
I agree with you.
The palette way or do you want to define it like Agora?
Like Agora and including and specifically with earth tones if we can.
Right, okay.
I just had one other point, not about color, but it's about, um, driving the narrative. If your urban planner, staff members were thinking of elements of your city. That you wanted to promote to be of a certain massing character, et cetera. There might be in these objective prescriptive, um, standards, the ability to be bonused with something. That might enhance the, the developer to do something that you wish him to do, him and her. But that isn't necessarily something that they would, um, immediately think of, right? So. How, how do I say this? It's like if you, if you want them to set their building back a certain way in order to make all the buildings set back along a certain length, right? Then what else could you give back to them so that it benefits them to do that? As a, um, bonus type, um, provision. This is if you do this, you'll get that. But if you only do, if you don't do this, you have to stay in this, in this box.
Well, the point system would certainly help. So if they get points for doing that, then they don't have to necessarily do, necessarily do something else.
Well, I guess I'm bringing up like, you know, the city of LA used to say you could have more floor area if you made your building more green, more sustainable. If you were better than Title twenty-four by twenty percent, you got another twenty percent of floor area. Who doesn't want that from the developer side? So if there's ways that you want to push the development of the city in a certain way, maybe there's incentives in your language. That allows the developer to, to pick and choose, yes, so the building ends up being cohesive. But is benefited by doing something special that the city wants.
I know, I understand. I think though, if we do points, it'll, it'll touch it because, because we, we will get to it. One of my comments here is sustainable design and that, uh, Tom spoke about. So if they do something like that, that's gonna get them more points so they don't have to maybe do something else.
I have a question based on the concerns that Matt raised. Can we have, and I'll use color as an example, can we have different standards and different zones?
I would think so. I think we, we should think about that. Cause Old Town I know is different and they, then, and, and they have a couple of lots there.
Or can we be sued? That's what I'm concerned. Oh, how come they have this and we can't have that?
We have to define, we have to specifically define zones like San Mateo did. The next one I, I had questions about were trees. Um, I, I was on the, you, you wouldn't know, but I was on the initial tree board here. So. Los Gatos requires a certain number of fifteen gallon trees from an approved list of street trees. And when I was on the tree board, we started, uh, developing approved street trees, uh, but that was twenty-five years ago and I, I don't believe we ever finished and maybe we need to do that. Also, Agora Hills requires twenty-four inch trees, but I think any tree person will tell you the smaller, the better. Because it'll establish, uh, and, and better and grow faster than the larger box tree. So I, I think we just have to address it. Let's put it that way.
Also clean trees. The trees in our neighborhood that they plant that are dirty, they.
Which kind do you have?
I don't even know. I haven't taken out from my house. I couldn't take it anymore.
All right. So I think there has to be reviewed by our tree board or?
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have a tree board. We have an environmental commission.
Right, but it assumed the role of a tree board.
This body is the tree board basically.
Yeah, all right. So somebody, I like the idea of having, requiring a certain number of trees for each project. And, and the fifteen gallon trees, but there should be a, a list. Remember it has to be objective. So. And John, if he were here, he would say they should all be native, but that's, uh, and that's the next subject is landscaping. And maybe we should consider just doing native landscaping. Um, so these, these, these objective standards required certain amount of landscaping.
To require a certain amount of landscaping, which our code already does.
Right.
With pervious surface, impervious. We have a lot of objective standards already.
Right. And maybe we can require.
That relate to some of that.
And maybe we can require native landscaping so, so we can see monarch butterflies again or something. I mean, I'll speak for John.
We're in a, I mean, staff, we believe you would have outdoor space related standards to include landscaping.
Yes.
Landscaping in my mind always includes trees. That's part of landscape. And so all of that would seem to be under one category in my book, but yes, so much of the experienced environment is outdoors. And even when you build the building, most of the property is still outdoors. So yes, that makes sense to me.
On the retail standards and mixed use projects, it, um, you pointed out that San Mateo requires seventy-five percent of the front to be glazed. Agora Hills requires sixty percent of the front to be glazed and has rules about the extent of tinting. I have no idea sixty percent, seventy-five percent. That's, you know, that wouldn't, we don't, I don't think any of us would really know. And, but the tinting I could understand. I, I don't think they should be too dark. I, I mean, if you're having retail, you should be able to see in.
Comments on that?
Yeah, sure. Come up.
I think that tinting is related to the energy efficiency primarily because the darker the glass, the less light transmisses, turns into heat. One thing about fenestration that is unique, um, in the design perspective is, is how much, how do you divide it? Is this, you know, are you going to talk about everything within ten feet has to be subdivided so that it has a sort of character to it? You know, like small panes from old England or is it more of a, of a different language, if you will? So something like that about how fenestration is. So something like that about how fenestration is articulated might be helpful. And then, I suppose if the, if the projects on the retail side, it's just, it's just hard because again, if you, you put a rule down, then someone has to, they're going to fight it or they're not going to fight it. And it's just, it's hard to say that that would turn out great. But I don't think you should specify that you can't have a certain style if that style's in cohesion to your overall building design. And I will say about the landscape thing, I think where this is going and what we've seen is that there's not going to be any land left. This is going to be all building. There's not going to be anything left for trees and wells and courtyards because the developer wants to put as big of a building as he can on it because the state's saying, go right ahead and densify this. Yes? I mean, there wasn't many trees left on this other one. So I love the idea that there's a street tree program that trees are being planted and cared for like they are, but I don't know how much land will be left unless you incentivize it as to say, okay, if you don't develop your entire lot with building, maybe you can go a little higher. Maybe there's a tower element or maybe there's something else that's gifted to you if you preserve something like open space. But maybe I'm speaking too much.
It may be a parking lot, not, not open space. You know what I mean? It could be a parking lot that they want shaded or they want some landscaping.
Oh, I definitely think there should be a percentage of your parking lot which is, has to be shaded after a five-year growth of a certain tree. That's, that's a normal standard across a lot of cities.
We may already have that.
We do.
Probably have that.
Again, they're, these were in the other objective standards from the other cities that we reviewed. But about the glazing, do you have a thought of it 60% or 75% must be glazed? Retail and mixed use.
Yeah, I mean, 75% is a lot of glazing. That's a lot of open area. You know, again, if you talk, look at Caruso, those buildings aren't necessarily bad-looking. Any of his lifestyle centers, right? And you could do a quick little percentage of how much glazing is in those. You know, one thing I'll just mention and I'll sit down and stop talking, but is, you know, the city, this city, does it really have a style? Like people say, oh, this is a Mediterranean, this is Spanish Mediterranean, this is Spanish Revival, this is Italianate, this is, no, it's not. It's not. It's, it's a lot of things that are competing for language, you know, cohesiveness. Just because you put red tile on a building doesn't make it a Spanish building by any means. It really has a lot to do with articulation and depth of wall and setback and massing and materiality and all of that. Same for all the other language, same for craftsmen. So if you say a building has to be craftsmen and it has to have these three elements, well, if it has those three elements, but everything else is in violation to green and green and everything they stood for, then it's not really a craftsman building. It's something else that sort of is mimicking elements of that style, but isn't essentially like really that thing. Do you get, sort of?
Right.
Get what I'm following?
But we do have like Old Town with the, with the Leonis Adobe being Monterey Spanish and the shopping center that's tried to copy that, you know, across the street.
Oh, no, I get that. Something historic.
And the senior home, you know, area, that's kind of goes with that Monterey Spanish.
Yeah, but I guess apart from the houses, which is a whole different thing, you do whatever you want. I don't know that your downtown really has a language to it that's not something which is already here from Caruso, which is not from here, right? So it's, this is, I guess, say this is your opportunity to craft the language such that the emergence of a Calabasas style, which isn't homogeneous, which isn't just one thing, but is a multiplicity of things, could be developed from the language based in your objective standards. And again, we're talking about like just a handful of buildings that are left to fill this, this whole city up.
But there's also, as Tom pointed out, Craftsman Corner. But there, there, there could be some development here.
Craftsman Corner, I don't even, what's Craftsman in Craftsman's Corner?
The name only.
It's the name only.
Oh, oh, that's just the name.
No, there's nothing Craftsman.
No, 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 I don't know why it's called that, but there's, I think it might be the actual, I don't know why it's called that.
Yeah, maybe because people who craft things for a living went there. I don't know.
Right, because it's an old name for kind of a rustic area.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But the glazing, I think, so I think the glazing has to be addressed, but not 75% which is kind of modern and maybe not even enough.
That's getting to a specific standard, but I think what I'm hearing is for commercial mixed use, which means we're going to incorporate the commercial component. First floor, how do you want to have your window area versus other building material? Glazing to me, I mean, if you're talking about percent and energy efficiency, to me, that, that may not be an objective design standard per se.
Agora Hills put in 60% as a minimum.
They may have defined glazing as window space. I don't know. It may not be.
It's glass, I don't.
For, for energy, for solar.
Well, it could be, it could be covered. I mean, you, you could have awnings or something or something.
I think you're reading up for 75%. That's a lot of surface area.
Right, so I think then lower than, so Agora's 60, San Mateo 75.
And I'm not trying to make time for your staff, but it also might be, you know, you talked about like, where do these things come from? Well, they came from the development of styles over centuries. And then people like Jacobs and others started codifying them into books. And then others started saying, well, we can make cities like this. So this thing is a huge conversation. But even borrowing that, some of the language here, if there was some analysis, some staff time to do some analysis on what they thought fitting styles would be and, you know, if they look at a, a building of a certain era, how much fenestration is actually there? If I did a area percentage of windows to wall, what is that? 25%?
So maybe we need to look at that here.
I think you should.
Yeah.
Be allowed to do that, there's, so that you know where you should land. It should be in a range between this and that, no more than this.
That's a good idea, a range. San Mateo's a big city, so it's, you know, and it's also a different climate. So maybe a lot of glazing is, is different.
The other thing, the last thing I'll say, and then I'll actually leave, the, the figures. Make sure your figures are actually something that has to do with this city. Because sometimes when you look at these design guidelines, you're like, where'd they get that diagram? That, that, you could never do that here. So that's another task set for the, for your group is to, is to create those images of how, how you do, what, what does that thing look like when it sets back? And I like some of that sketch-up stuff that showed little building corners. That's helpful. I've seen other ones that have been hand-drawn, but something that's like consistent and cohesive throughout this whole book. And I mean, I think this is a, this is a cool-looking book that's going to get created. And hopefully it's, you know, not too much work for your staff. But I really like what I'm hearing. So benefit to, to everybody on this. And again, come to the ARP, ask us what we can help with.
You'll be getting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for taking up so much time.
No, no.
We're, we appreciate that.
No, we appreciate it, thank you.
Agora had rules about open space views. You mentioned this, I think, Tom. Agora had specific rules about maintaining views of open space. And I don't know if that's going to apply to us. We, we do have open space, so I don't know if there's maybe some office building on Agora Road might have a view of open space or something.
Well, they do where the city hall is and Lady Face, that's.
Oh, yeah, oh, oh, yes. So I don't know if this applies to us, so look at it.
Viewshed, it'd be a good thing to at least explore as a category is sightlines and viewsheds, that sort of thing. They come into play where you have significant landmarks. You could imagine in Paris where there'd be views of, say, the Eiffel Tower, they may have a district where you've got to have a certain view that is not blocked, at least fully. And then you'd define what percentage. You'd have to come up with an objective measure of what the view is.
Agora did. And I think they're looking at their, maybe their zoned open space and, and view corridors to their zoned open space.
And part of, part of looking at that kind of thing and assessing it is, can you, can you really make it objective? And Agora apparently found a way. And is it really applicable here? Are you going to have sites that are going to?
Right.
That you're wanting to preserve that for? So there would be some things we're going to look into that we may find from the analysis are not really going to be effective here. They're not going to be able to achieve a goal because the conditions aren't going to be favorable for it.
It's really going to depend on the zones.
Right.
For example, that, that one area where they have the church where they could theoretically put up one of these projects, if you picture that zone, there's really nothing.
Yeah, I think, right. It's just something to look, look at. And, and then the last thing I had here was sustainable design and building, but we already have that, I believe. So I mean.
You mean in terms of the LEED?
Yes.
Well, we can, we can use this opportunity to improve on that.
Right.
Because ours is predicated on LEED 2.0, so.
Oh, okay. So, okay. Are there any other subjects that should be considered in these design standards?
No, I, and I get back to, I think, these are going to have to be studied by zone. We can't have one size fits all in our city.
I may note that there seems to be interest on more than just one commissioner's part for us to explore. Because again, in getting, I think, an excellent point, I think it was made by Will, is you want to do a front-end assessment, I'll call it, of what is our current landscape? If we were to apply certain kinds of standards to our current landscape, could you even build it, right? And if we like it, we want to be able to know you could replicate it. So there would be some front-end assessment that would help inform us about that sort of thing. What would be realistic to pursue and what wouldn't?
Anything else? Matt, do you have any areas that you want to be looked at?
No, just taking a step back on the, the tinting issue, the 75 versus whatever percent. I, I don't, I'm not strongly opposed to it, but I am opposed to it. You know, businesses are different. You might have a little fitness center that needs as much, you know, shade as possible. And you might have a boutique that wants no tinting. So I don't want to stifle, you know, business owners and people that might want to come open up a nice business here in Calabasas. But besides that, my, my overall opinion is sort of along the lines of what Tom said. I almost want to go find my favorite in the city mixed-use building, not many. I want to go find my favorite multifamily and just, again, see if that would even be possible with what we're discussing here and if possible to mirror, you know. But then, of course, the countervailing aspect is the uniformity. We don't want buildings and development that's uniform.
We don't want a theme park.
Exactly.
So, that, that was said about Old Town. We don't want it to look like a theme park, but it's got to be compatible. So anyway, more comments or more things for them to look at?
No, again, we have direction or the staff has direction.
Do you have some, enough?
I, I think I do. If, among the things we've discussed, and I have at least 10 here, some of which I sort of combined into a category. So for example, I've got trees and landscaping together. But that's plenty. We have a lot of direction. So I appreciate it very much.
And a lot of work. And a lot of work and maybe.
We got a lot of input from our ARP chair.
Yes.
As well, so I think that's excellent. We're going to be sure to put them on, on the actual development as we work on a set of standards as what would be approved by councils, an actual project that we would do an RFP for to get a consultant to help us do. Especially because we need design expertise is highly involved. So the firm that would be picked would have to have that kind of expertise and demonstrate it clearly.
Last, last specific preference I have, there was, I think it was one of the mixed-use mockups, models, images where the ground floor was set back and you had columns. I didn't like that one.
Yeah, okay, so.
It had an arcade or something underneath?
I think that's what they called it.
But it was, I know what he's talking about.
I don't like that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, the, the image they showed there was not particularly attractive. I agree with that.
It's a place for the homeless to come and stay.
Oh.
I'll give you an example of a local project that has an arcade that I think is very attractive. And that's our library right next door.
Oh, yes.
So an arcade can be a very, very nice thing. And Venice has some examples. So it's a matter of how you write the, the standard. It's a great example of how the standard could be written one way that creates a result you don't like. Or could be written in a way that you get some excellent results.
It's like the one in Ojai looks nice, but that one in that image didn't look nice. I agree. And I'm not sure quantitatively why, why it didn't, but, but because we have to be objective somehow.
That's, that's why, Tom, thank you. Because, yeah, you know, you bring that, you bring that up, the library's lovely, so.
Does Mayor's Youth Council have any comments or suggestions that you want us to look at?
I think you guys covered more than everything I know, so it was great. Thank you, Tom.
Oh, well, thank you. Anything else, Tom, you need from us for, as far as input?
No, I think we have the direction and I'm beginning to wonder if we might have Noah as a future architect. He seems that excited.
Not yet. I need a couple more years under my belt, I guess.
That was really fortuitous that we had the Chair of the ARP here tonight. That was, that was really good. All right, so if we, then we should just move on, I guess? Director's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Just looking forward to your next couple of meetings. Excuse me, on May 16th, the only item we have tracking for there right now is a single-family home addition on Declaration Avenue. And then for the meeting after that, which is June 6th, we will be bringing you, we believe it's on track for that. I don't think it would have to go to the next meeting after that, but it would be the capital improvement program review we do every year, just a review to ensure consistency with the general plan. It's not, just to remind you, it's not a review of the projects themselves or the budgetary components that go with them. It's just whether they meet the provisions, objectives and whatnot in the general plan. So that'll be one on that day. And then we've got a new sing, single-family home site plan review on that schedule as